Good evening, everyone. This is the March 14th, 2024 Town of Fishkill Planning Board meeting, and I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of quick announcements before we get going. First, a reminder to silence your cell phones, please, and also, anyone who will be speaking into a microphone, such as myself, make sure that we are speaking directly into it so everybody here and at home can hear. All seven voting members and one alternate member are present tonight, so we have the required quorum with a full slate of voting members. I appreciate that for all the members showing up. So today, I am declaring is the most beautiful and best day of the year so far. Since we just got through the Academy Awards, I'm giving it a special Oscar for the best day of the year so far. Subject to change. And then again, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Pi Day. I'm sure you all know what that is, but it's, for those who don't, it's the factor in mathematical formula for dealing with circles and radius of circles and all that good stuff, and it happens to be 3.14 in European terminology for dates. So I had thought about bringing some pies in for everybody, but I couldn't decide whether it should be apple, or blueberry, or pumpkin, or lemon meringue, or just what, so I didn't bring any. But I understand at least one of our planning board members has memorized quite a few digits of Pi. Would you like, anyone like to recite that? Because I understand, I understand it's an infinite number, so we could be here all night, if you like.
No, let's not be.
Let's, okay.
I have a meeting at 7:30 in the morning.
Okay, all right, then.
I have to be here at 7:30 in the morning. I have to be at 7:30 in the morning.
All right, so enough of that stuff. So the first item on the agenda is Planning Board Meeting Minutes, Board to approve and adopt the January 11th, 2024, and February 8th, 2024, Meeting Minutes. I had sent some non-substantive comments, edits, to Debbie for corrections. Why don't we do these separately, starting with the January 11th minutes? Are there any comments or corrections on the January 11th, 2024 draft minutes?
No.
I didn't see any.
Okay. All right, then, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the January 11th, 2024 meeting?
Some moved. All right, second.
Let's see, who was the mover?
Jody.
Jody, and then Fred seconded it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
That passes 7-0. All right, and then any comments or corrections on the February 8th minutes?
No.
All right. And actually, I just wanted to mention that on both of these, they were very well done, and there were not really a whole lot of corrections, and I appreciate those who do it.
Thank you.
So would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the February 8th, 2024 meeting?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 7 to 0. Great, so we've got one public hearing tonight, and that's for the Basis Industrial Route 9D Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. I'll read mostly from the agenda at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, if possible. Applicant seek site development plan and special use permit approval for the redevelopment of a 4.9 acre plus or minus property that's located within the GB General Business Owning District. The redevelopment will consist of the demolition of the existing Red Pepper Diner and Orange County Transit Buildings for the construction of a 75,057 square foot two-story self-storage facility, a 3,045 square foot fast food establishment, and a 2,726 square foot car wash. The existing Sonaco Station and Food Mart will remain. Additional improvements will include parking, drive aisles, lighting, landscaping, and associated amenities. I won't read the full parcel descriptions, but there are general business-owned portions of five tax parcels involved in the proposal located on Route 9D between Pappas Lane and Nini Drive. Is there a motion to open this public hearing?
Some moved.
Second.
Felix moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, public hearing is now open. So, welcome. Would you like to give us just a few brief comments about the proposal description, just so the folks at home can get a little better feeling for what this proposal is about?
Sure. You've pretty much done my presentation.
All right.
It's a great, great meeting notice. For the record, Corey's-
Don't feel you have to expand on it too much if you don't want to.
For the record, Corey Salama from Zarin &amp; Steinmetz here, turning it up behalf of the applicant, here with me are Zoe Daniel from Basis, Chris Michalik and Reno Velardi from SGW Architects, and Corey Chase and Zach Cam from Dynamic Engineering. Again, I know this has been before you for a while now, so I won't belabor it, but as the Chair said, we're redeveloping a 4.9 acre portion of an overall 25 acre site. The former diner, transit building, residential dwellings, sheds, trailers are going to come down. Gas station, convenience store will remain. As you said, we're going to redevelop the site with a 75,000 two-story square foot warehouse building, 3,000 square foot car wash, 2,700 square foot fast food establishment, and we're going to retain the 1,300 square foot convenience store with the gas station. Since, I guess we were last here, made certain provisions to the plans. We updated the EAF Part 1. The centrally located driveway has been restricted to right-in ingress only, so there'll be no exiting from there. Western Drive is right-in and right-out. We're continuing our work with the DOT on the curb cuts for the gas station. The drive aisle in front of the self-storage facility has been reduced from 30 feet to 25 feet. We've obviously put in the 20-foot wide buffer in between the GB zone and the R15 zone. And so with that, I don't know if you want us to turn it over for a more detailed description for the public from our experts, or just open it up to the public for their comments?
I think at this point, we'll just open it up for comments. So thank you for that brief introduction. First, could I just see a show of hands from people in the audience who might want to speak or ask questions about this proposal? So I see one. Are there any, I can't see in the-
Two.
Two? Okay, so there are probably two who are going to speak at tonight's hearing. So I will go ahead and read the rules of conduct for public hearings. So speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves, so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn of the microphone. I don't think that'll be a problem tonight. Also, speakers are limited to no more than four minutes. There'll be a warning when there's one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information. Repetitive comments made either by someone else at tonight's meeting or previously made, although there haven't been any prior hearings yet, are discouraged. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing, actually, so if you have something more to say than you can say in a brief time here at the hearing, you can certainly send those in to the planning office. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board, that is, the particular application under review at this hearing. No verbal interruptions, outbursts, or obscene language. And I think that will do it for tonight. So, all right, so if you would like to come up to the podium and speak, raise your hand again, so I can see who is interested in speaking. All right, so those two back there, so why don't you both come toward the front, and then one of you come up to the podium? Well, yeah, one of you, all right. Go ahead, come on up, and again, tell us your name and address, please.
Jacinta Lorick, 45 Pappas Lane.
Okay. All right, the floor is yours.
So my only concern is, even with the traffic light there now, just the in and out from 9D to Pappas Lane, and the roundabout way behind the, behind the gas station. You know, we have some problems with traffic coming in there. So that's my concern.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Felix.
When you say, I'm sorry, can you tell us a little bit more, what do you say? What part is the problem?
It's just like how people cut out the gas station, okay? Like if we're, because I live behind there.
Sure.
So when I come out, you know, people jet straight across, leaving the gas station, or they don't yield coming behind the gas station as we're coming out.
So you're having problems, you're coming straight out on Pappas. People are coming out of the, now the development will be-
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
And you don't have any other questions about the proposal or anything? You've been keeping up with it, or you've seen enough of the plans? Because we actually will be having a project review later in tonight's meeting, where we'll be going, you know, perhaps going back over any of the planned details, and in particular, some of the environmental information about the project. So certainly, if you want to stick around for that, we'll be getting into more detail.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, come on up.
My name is Bob Sarson. I've resided at 16th Pappas Lane for 35 years. I'm directly behind the project. I'm actually welcoming this project. I'm tired of a rotating business coming through. You know, you called the transit building now? It was a Beacon School District bus garage originally. It's been two lumber yards, it's been a TV production house, and a storage facility. So something that's going to stabilize the area is nice. So the only comments I have is, actually during construction, the access back to the houses back behind the project. Pappas Lane is basically just the one road. Pappas Lane used to connect to Ford's Place, but it's now basically been abandoned and old roam. It used to be like that, put in the stadium for a couple of years, be able to go back and forth. And the other part I talk, the Beacon City School District actually uses the Pappas Lane driveway, the crosscut, as a drop-off and pickup for elementary and high school kids. So during construction, obviously, figure out how that's going to happen, or the school district's got to know to readjust their school, the school bus route.
All right, well, perhaps later on, we'll ask the applicant to provide some responses or comments as to how that, you know, kind of coordination that might take. So any other questions or comments?
I've been here at every meeting that they've been here.
Good, okay, so you're pretty familiar with the project. Thank you. Thanks so much for coming. All right, okay, so we have someone else here to speak to this matter. Come on up.
Good evening. My name's Mike Nestler. I own 9D Easy Storage, right down the road from it. I've been aware of it, but not with much detail. I wondered if there was a proposed layout to the site, if they could show that up there and access it. Is it just the two lights is how it gets into the site? And a little more detail, because it's the first time I'm looking at it.
All right. Well, perhaps after we hear from everyone who's here tonight to speak, we could ask the applicant to put those drawings up.
And those drawings are also available-
Always online with the agendas?
Online, yes.
Yes, sir.
So those can be viewed also after the meeting as well.
All right. Is anyone else here to speak to this matter tonight? All right, well, we're, if possible, I would like for the applicant to come up. I'm pretty sure we have the drawings on the-
They're there.
On the screen, well, okay, so-
That's the starter.
All right, so if you could come up and just kind of very briefly run through the site plan drawings?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Corey Chase with Dynamic Engineering. It's good to see everyone again. So the plan that's before you on the screen this evening, it's, as Corey mentioned earlier, it's consistent with what we previously presented to the Board at the last informational session. To answer the women's comments that were brought up earlier, one thing you'll be happy to note is, as part of this development proposal, we are proposing to curb off the entirety of the gas station access directly adjacent to the signal. It'll be curbed and channelized, so patrons will know, whoops, my apologies, will no longer be allowed to exit or enter the gas station in front of the convenience store building. We're going to be providing a traditional curb cut along Pappas Lane that'll be stop-controlled, so anybody that's exiting this facility will be required to stop and yield the right-of-way to those people that are traveling north and south on Pappas Lane. So we will be establishing more of a traditional driveway, a traditional access, establishing right-of-way for those vehicles, and eliminating that condition that currently exists where patrons are allowed to essentially turn left in off 9D and basically cut diagonal directly in front of the building to access the fuel canopy. As was mentioned, we did modify the access when we were originally here before the Board. We were proposing several full-movement curb cuts along Route 9D through consultations with the Department of Transportation. The westernmost driveway has been restricted to right-in, right-out. The centralized driveway has been restricted to right-in only, and we are still in negotiations with the Department discussing that right-out-only driveway directly in front of the convenience store, which we agreed to as part of a condition of any approval, should the Board grant it, to close that when the lease is up for that convenience store. So as was mentioned, there is a proposed car wash located directly to the rear of the existing convenience store. The center of the site's going to be developed with the self-storage facility, it's that large building in the middle. And then the western portion of the property is where the fast-food restaurant with drive-thru is located. There is cross-access between all three of these facilities, so you would be able to drive between any of the uses on-site without being required to go back out onto 9D. And all left-turn access, both in and out of the subject property, will be done at the signalized intersection at Pappas Lane. Be happy to provide any more detail, Mr. Chairman, if you feel like there's anything else you want me to touch on.
No, I think that's excellent for now. Thank you very much. Okay, I'll just ask one more time if there's anyone else from the audience who would like to speak to this matter tonight.
Mr. Chair, can we ask the lady for the school bus? Does the school bus go into Pappas Lane and around it, or do they?
Yeah, that's a good question. So do you-
Because I didn't understand.
Would you come, it's the gentleman back there. Why don't you come back up and tell us-
Can I turn on the mic? Can you just be done?
No. So how do, how does the school bus-
Actually, currently, the school bus either takes the left-hand turn into Nini Drive, or goes into where the Red Pepper Diner on the southernmost, or actually, what you're calling it, the westernmost, the southernmost driveway at the Red Pepper Diner, makes the left-hand turn in there from 9D, and comes around onto the Pappas Lane driveway and picks them up at the corner of the fence on the original.
Okay.
And then comes back out.
And they come back out, Pappas Lane.
Okay.
Got it.
So they're making a U-turn going through.
Any other questions from Board members before we move on to other parts of this? Okay, so I will turn to our attorney and engineer to ask whether it would be appropriate to close the public hearing tonight, or whether the Board might want to continue the hearing to the April meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you should close the public hearing.
I would agree.
Do Board members agree?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing tonight?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Jody?
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 7 to 0. The public hearing is closed. So as I mentioned, the Board will continue discussion of this application a little bit later tonight under project review, so anyone interested in that, please stick around. It won't take too long to get to some of these other things we have. So first, next matter is a request for extension of approval for the Johnson Trails five-lot subdivision, Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 28th, 2024, that requests a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary subdivision reapproval that the Board adopted on September 14th, 2023.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Gillespie. How are you?
Good evening, all. Good evening. Yeah, we're looking for, hopefully this will be our last extension on our approval. The holdup was effectively getting the wells dropped and doing the testing. That's all been done. We're waiting on the results to come back from the lab, assuming that everything is okay, that we can kind of put together the package to kind of get back in front of you for our final, but we're not there yet, so we're asking for an extension of preliminary.
All right, Mr. Cordisco, do you have any comments or concerns about the legal aspects of this request?
The Board had previously granted preliminary approval for this project, and that was done back in September, September 14th. This is a timely request for an additional six-month extension, and I believe that it would be appropriate for the Board to consider it at this time.
All right. John, do you have any concerns?
No, not at all. I agree, it's an appropriate request.
All right, any questions or comments from Board members?
No.
Okey-dokey. Is there a motion to approve the request for a six-month extension of the resolution of preliminary subdivision, re, sorry, subdivision reapproval for Johnson Trails five-lot subdivision, extending it to September 14, 2024?
Some moved.
Bob moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
That was, oh, you're not a voting member.
You're not a voting member. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Who would like to second?
I heard Jody.
Jody.
Jody seconded.
All right. All right, glad we caught that, Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that extension carries 7 to 0.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you very much for coming. Okay, the next item is project reviews for the Companion Pet Hospital, 8 US Route 9, amended site development plan and amended special use permit, Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on February 28th, 2024. The current submission proposes the deletion of the previously proposed dog training facility. It includes the proposed 2,212 square foot expansion of the existing pet hospital. All site work is now proposed within the Town of Fishkill, from our understanding. So, welcome, Mr. Rogie. Would you please give us a little more update on the revised proposal?
Sure, I'll elaborate a little bit on that. We removed the dog training facility. That was the second, the new building. And we're keeping the first part of the project, which was the expansion of the existing use, the pet hospital. We also, the elimination of that building let us reduce the septic size. We eliminated a water service, so we have, we're using an existing water service now. No utility connections are necessary. It also reduced the footprint of the project, so now we're under an acre. So we also eliminated the stormwater control portion of it, since, you know, we're pretty far under an acre. We also, before we decided to remove the building, we had a meeting with the Town of Phillips Town about their role in the review, and there was a lot of discussion about the gore and trying to figure out who owned the gore and who would be reviewing the project in the gore, in the area between the towns that's not really owned by anybody.
For those at home, do you want to just briefly explain what a gore is, since we're talking about Pi and all that kind of other stuff?
Sure. I've learned a little bit about it. I don't know if it's 100% correct, but I'll try. The, I guess, when the counties were both laid out, they were done independently, and then when they were joined together, you know, from far away, it looks like the line of the county matched, but it zigzags between the counties here and there. And that section between the two counties, it's quite a large gore, I think it's 70, 80 feet, so that's an area that they don't touch. It's like no man's land between the two counties. And it seems like, even though it's on any of the mapping, Putnam County taxes it, so, but Town of Phillips Town still didn't believe they had control of it, even if the county taxed it, so. So the elimination of that, that building made it much easier for them. I had a phone call with them today. They're not going to have any part of the review or approval in this. I'm waiting for a memo from them. I should be getting it tomorrow, but they gave me their verbal, you know, acknowledgement that no review on their part would be necessary for the project. So I think we got most of the details worked out on the plan, so I'd like to see if we can move forward. I think public hearing would be next step.
What are you doing about fencing?
Fencing?
Are you doing any, because originally you had fencing. Is all the fencing gone now?
That was part of the dog training facility, so now it's gone. There's no exterior things. It's just the vet now.
I think the only fencing may be around the trash disposal area.
Oh, correct, yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's a standard thing that we-
Yeah, I wasn't talking about, I was thinking, you were saying we do a dog training and-
All right, well, why don't we go to CPL's review memo? John, do you want to briefly go over that?
Sure. One thing that occurred to me after I had issued our review letter is, previously, I believe the Board, based on our recommendation, deemed this unlisted action. But given the change, the reduction in the scope of the project, they're now proposing a little over 2,200 square foot addition. So that would, in my opinion, and I believe Dominic would agree, that it should now be considered a type-two action per seeker.
Agreed, it would be a type-two action.
I was going to bring that up or ask that, so that's, I'm glad you brought it up. So, yeah, I have some verbiage a little bit later where we can address that.
Okay. Other than that, we really don't have a whole lot of comments left. They had been working through them with the previous layout with the additional building. Like Mr. Rogie said, they're now well under an acre disturbance, so that gets them out of having to do a lot of the full SWIP requirements. So really, at this point, they need to get Health Department approval. We asked for them to provide something from Phillips Town for the file. It sounds like that's in the works, that they're not going to have any part of the review. And I don't think there was really anything else. It was, we only had a couple of comments. I didn't bring my paper copy, but I do have it up here.
Is this something they would consider in the future?
They have, I haven't heard that it would be considered, so I'm going on what I'm told that they just want to eliminate it. It's not, you know, a viable business, so they just wanted to take it out. And this, this was the easiest way to salvage the design, was to just trim everything up as it was, you know, minimize redesign costs.
I mean, I get it, I'm just wondering if they're going to be back in six months or a year.
I don't think so, but if they ever-
Asking for, you know, now I want to do this.
Yeah, well, they'll have to come back if they want to do anything, right? So that'll figure that out in the future.
Yeah, I was going to ask the very same question, and wanted to get a- Yeah. Well, I was going to ask the very same question and wanted to get it on the record that there are, that the applicant, in effect, is not planning to go ahead with the dog training facility at this time. And I was going to ask then if it is off the table. So it sounds to me like you're indicating that it is off the table unless something in the future changes, and then you would have to come back to us.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only other comment I had was, I know there was some discussion about the landscaping plan in the past, and now with this reduced layout, it's just something that the board should look out and make sure they're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Were you supposed to get water? Were you trying to get water? Get projects mixed up. But you were going to bring water across route nine, or you can...
There's actually a stub on that, on the side of the road, but we don't need it anymore. We're just, the building already has water, and we're expanding the building, so it'll all be interior work.
Any other questions from board members? Going to the landscaping plan. Thanks for bringing that up, John. I looked at the landscaping plan and thought that there could be some minor additions to it, just to enhance certain of the parts of the proposal. So I was going to suggest adding several large shrubs on the north and east side of the proposed trash enclosure. There will be a fence around it, but it kind of helps to do a little bit of screening, especially since that's towards the residential side of it.
Okay.
Then perhaps adding some small trees on the east side of the new parking lot. I know there are a number of trees that'll be remaining in that kind of open field area, but I think a little bit of additional landscaping there would help to enhance the look of the facility. And then third, adding some small trees or large shrubs on the south side of the new building. Again, it's facing south towards Putnam County, towards, actually, I'm not quite sure how visible the trailer park is from there.
There's a row of trees on the south end of the property.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they show up on here. No, they don't show up on there. Pretty sure there's a tree line on that end of the property. But I can, are you looking for something to screen the building, or just, you know, planting beds?
Kind of enhance it with some, you know, softening effect. And actually, I think that might help from the view from Route nine for vehicles approaching from the south as well.
Okay. Yeah, there's a planting bed around the existing building all around the front, so we can just extend that a bit around the corner.
Okay, that would make sense. So do those comments on additional landscaping sound good to the planning board?
Yep.
The other thing I was going to mention is just a kind of a technical thing that I think that you'll need to resubmit the, a revised architectural plan set and elevations, which would just be for the hospital addition at this point. Because I think the previous set included the whole, you know, the whole thing with the dog training facility. So I just want to make sure we have specific drawings that we can reference in our resolution dealing with the actual now current proposal.
I think they were submitted separately. They were designed separately. I'm pretty sure they were. I can resubmit them. Nothing has changed, so I can go back to our previous middle and just...
I think it would help, because we also will now have to resubmit this for a general municipal law proposal referral. You don't think we will, Debbie?
I've never done a revised one, ever.
Really? Okay. So we did get a...
Usually, I usually get the one crack at it, and if the applicant wants to contact the county, we do it that way, but they don't like to receive it more than once.
Even though this is a completely new revised proposal?
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, I can certainly do that if you'd like, but normally they don't take it.
All right. Well, no, I don't think we want to give them any more work that we don't have to give them, but...
It's fine.
All right.
So I think it's a lesser application than what it was before.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was more, I would say yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Debbie.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so we talked a little bit about the seeker classification, so it sounds like we should be reclassifying the previous proposal. There had been a classification as an unlisted action at the November 9th, 2023 meeting. We actually did send out a lead agency intent notice to coordinate that particular action with New York State DOT and the County Health Department, and I guess the town of Phillips Town was part of that. So I guess I'm going to put this all together in a new motion proposed, which will also reference the possibility of perhaps sending out a, just a, what you'd call it, a notice to those involved agencies, just indicating that this will no longer be subject to seeker review because we're reclassifying it as a type-two action. Probably would just be a courtesy to those involved agencies. So Dominic, do you think that might be appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that it's necessary. It certainly, there's no error by doing so, but there's no other agencies that have jurisdiction over the project, correct me if I'm wrong. You don't need permits from any other agencies in connection with this revised plan.
Just the county for the septic?
Right.
So the County Health Department?
Yeah.
I mean, perhaps a notice to them, you know, that this is now type-two action, so they wouldn't have to be expecting a NIG deck for the project.
We're replacing the existing septic system.
Okay, so let me do this. Let me see if there's a motion to reclassify the scaled-down proposal for the Companion Pet Hospital as a type-two action, not subject to review under seeker, and to notify any appropriate involved agencies that this will no longer be undergoing a coordinated seeker review. And that might just refer to the County Health Department. Is there a motion to that effect?
Sure, so moved.
Felix moves it. Fred seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that carries seven to zero. All right, so you mentioned the possibility of scheduling a public hearing for the April meeting. I think that would be quite appropriate, given where we are now. And it would be good to hear from the public at this point on the scaled-down proposal. So if need be, the board could always continue the public hearing. But that certainly wouldn't stop us from scheduling the public hearing. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for the April 11th, 2024 meeting for the Companion Pet Hospital, amended site development plan and amended special use permit at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible?
So moved.
Bob moves it. Is there a second? Ravi seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. And so we just need to talk about location of public hearing signs. I would suggest maybe two signs. One at the entrance to the existing pet hospital on Carol Lane, and maybe one on the Route nine frontage somewhere in the vicinity of the existing hospital building.
Can you repeat that last part, John? I'm sorry.
One on the Route nine frontage of the site in the vicinity of the existing hospital building.
With the sign facing north and south of the...
Yeah.
That's our goal, yes.
Yeah.
So one on Route nine and one on the...
One on Carol Lane at the entrance.
I'm writing to Eric. Don't worry.
And, yeah, so Debbie will have some public hearing information for you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions or matters we should talk about tonight on this one?
No.
Okay, so I think we're good for tonight, and then we'll see you in April for the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Okay, that brings us back to Basis Industrial Route 9D, site development plan and special use permit. Board to review a draft EAF, Environmental Assessment Form Part Two, and a draft EAF Part Three. So Liz Axelson is present tonight from CPL. Liz prepared a draft EAF Parts Two and kind of part of a Part Three. So I was going to ask Liz to go through the EAF Part Two, and we'll go, I think the way to do this would be to go through each item that's on the EAF Part Two, have the board ask questions, or discuss it, or suggest revisions as we do each item. And then I think at the end of that discussion, we can talk a little bit about the Part Three and see where that might be going. All right, Liz, it's all yours.
All right. Hello, everybody. I'll try to, you know, be efficient going through this. Hope you've had a chance to look at it. So I'm looking at the full EAF Part Two, Identification of Potential Project Impacts, and this is an initial draft, because until you all have commented on it, it's not ready to be fully considered. So, excuse me, so I'm starting on impact area number one, impact on land. That is marked yes. And I've marked three areas of impact as a moderate impact. So in the right column is moderate to large. So if I've put two asterisks, that means moderate. The first one is a proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. And so that would really pertain mostly to the storage facility that will be having a basement area, and how far they have to dig down to get that. And then E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. The development could happen all at once. They could be constructing all three. My general understanding is the priority is for the storage. And then there's still some question marks about who exactly would be the car wash and who exactly would be the restaurant. So it's possible this could be sort of phased. And then the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal. And that's a moderate impact, mainly because it's, you know, a lot of the site, the part that's in front, the part that's in the GB zoning district, will be disturbed. So does anybody have any questions about the impact on land impacts?
I do.
Okay.
Question about D, we checked no, or the draft is checked no. But do we know that for sure? We never really got cut fill volumes, and as you mentioned with item C, there is the basement for the storage. A lot of material potentially could be removed. Do we know exactly that that's a no?
I want to double-check it, but I feel like that amount that I might have checked in there SWIP materials, but I'll check it again. And it wasn't to that level. But let me check that one again. Do you happen to know that?
Or, I think we can certainly ask the applicant if they have
Sure.
specific information that would help on that. We can always come back to that if we need to, while you're looking it up. Meanwhile, I'll just mention I had a couple of little things. First on item E, construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. So the EAF Part One indicated 18-month construction, not in multiple phases. And I think it might actually be helpful if we add that wording, just in a parenthetical...
18 months construction.
18 months construction slash not multiple phases. That's the proposal that the applicant is currently making.
Okay, you can add that. That's easy enough.
And then Liz and I had talked about some of this before, and we're hoping that there's room to squeeze in some wording on some of these, because it's, some of it is pretty tight, but I think she did a pretty good job so far of what we've seen on adding.
It's all done with font sizes, and, you know, as long as you all have reading glasses, I think you'll be okay.
Yeah, like, two font or something.
Yeah.
On F, so I thought it might be helpful to add some wording. This is the one about physical disturbance or vegetation removal on the site. Thought it might be helpful to add some wording that most of the site is already disturbed, and there's not a lot of tree removal proposed. So that might be some brief wording that we could add there. And of course, when we get to a determination of significance, one way or the other, you know, these little blurbs that we're going to add in the EAF Part Two can always be expanded on.
With the deconstruction, is it going to be done in one stage? All units are going to go down that they marked, that they're going to take down? You have two houses and a...
We can ask the applicant to confirm, but that's what the EAF Part One indicated.
That the way it was going...
Demolition, I think, is a given to be, it's not usually considered a phase one of the project, but demolition has to start before the construction of the project.
Well, my question was all of the demolition.
So you're talking about, is the demolition going to be phased?
I don't know. That's a question.
No, I'm asking you if that's your question. All right. I would be happy to have the applicant come up and just answer things like that. I mean, not that you have to stand at the microphone the whole time that we're going through this, but, so we have a question on the phasing of demolition and perhaps the phasing of the project as a whole. And we also have a question about the amount of material that will be removed from the site. Excavation and removal.
Would you prefer that we take notes and answer everything once at the end, or come up as questions are asked?
Well, we're trying to go through them, I think, one by one, so it might be better to do it as they're asked.
So demolition is going to happen at one time? Everything will be demoed, and then we'll move on with our construction for the 18-month period with respect to the cut?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Zach Kam of Dynamic Engineering. We have not done a cut phone analysis on site, but based on the grading, I don't anticipate over 1,000 tons being excavated and removed. If anything, there will likely be a little bit of fill brought to the site. But we can provide a cut fill analysis if needed.
So cut and fill still to be done. Okay, that's very helpful.
Okay, why don't you go on to the next item, Liz?
Okay. So let's see, under impact on geological features, that's no. And then item three, this is on page two, impacts on surface water. The only items that are marked are all small impacts. Really aren't any water bodies or waterways on the site, maybe some drainage ways, but not like a defined stream. So if you're looking at item three, impacts on water, and you run down to E, it reads, "The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body, either from upland erosion runoff or by disturbing bottom sediments." And that's checked in the no or small column with an asterisk, and that means small impact. And then going down to, let's see, three rows to item three H, "The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies." And that one, again, is marked yes with a single asterisk, meaning small impact. And the next one is I. "The proposed action may affect water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action." That is, again, marked as a small impact. And K, at the bottom of page two, "The action may require construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities." of existing wastewater treatment facilities. And that's marked with a small impact. I think it's public sewer. But the volume that's gonna go out mainly because the storage facility doesn't have people, you know, inhabiting it, or in their, you know, like the restaurant or the car wash, et cetera. So any questions about the items under number three, or comments?
I don't have any.
Okay, zooming along. Next page, three, there are no impacts on groundwater. Bottom of that page, five, no impact on flooding. There's no floodway there. And moving on to page four, no impacts on air. And the bottom of page four, item number seven, impact on plants and animals. It's marked yes. And the only item that's marked with any impact at all is B. So this is seven B at the bottom of page four. The proposed action may result in reduction or degradation of any habitat by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by the New York State or federal government. And then I typed in project site may contain Indiana bat, long-eared bat, and habitat. And under the moderate to large column, I marked it for moderate impact with the two asterisks. And I think what we need is either notation on the plan or expanded notation on the plan that may address that. So, any comments on that?
I think there was one on the next page continuing.
Could you expand on the expanded comment on the plan that you're looking for?
So the site can possibly contain Indiana bat and long-eared bat. And there's some standard notation that has to do with tree removal between certain period of the time of year. And so I think, I can't remember whether or not that's been addressed. I don't believe it has.
I'm sure we can put that note on the plans.
Yep, it's very easy to do.
But the area that we're working, there are no trees.
There are no trees.
It's the R-15 in the back that would have the trees, and we're not going anywhere near them, you know, we're not doing any work there. So there's no trees.
There's no trees on any part of that site? I thought there was some tree removal.
Also, while he's coming up, I did take a look at the habitat assessment report that was part of the EAF attachments, and that was kind of addressed in there, which, you know, I think it probably is a good idea to flag vegetation removal just as an issue, but not like a major significant issue.
Right.
And it would require, you know, even if there's a minimal cutting or clearing, it would require a note on the site plan. So I think that's just really what we had in mind.
Pretty standard notation.
Go ahead.
So there are some existing trees surrounding some of the existing buildings that will need to come out. They're kind of scattered and not many in a row. But the issue with clearing with the bats, the time of season, you can't cut trees down from March 31st to October 31st. So we're happy to put a note on the plans mentioning that any tree clearing would have to happen outside of that window.
Yeah, it's nice if the notation actually, you know, indicates the species that are, you know, the reason for the restriction on the timing of clearing.
We can add a note for the restriction of the tree clearing in the window, sure.
Thanks.
And we'll add that into our determination of significance when we get to that point. And then I think you had one more item checked under number seven on the next page.
Yep, you're right. So top of page five, this is seven J. It's other impacts, the proposed action may involve moderate removal of vegetation including wooded areas, and that's marked as moderate.
That's marked as what?
Moderate. Moderate impact. It's not, it's not no impact, it's not a small impact, moderate, it's not large. Does anybody have questions about either of those?
I'm just gonna go to the existing conditions plan, just want to show the board what the site looks like currently. So onsite right now, there's a, you know, a bunch of scattered buildings, building here, here, a large one in the rear that actually protrudes into the R-15 zone. There's another dwelling over here, as well as a small building up in this corner. There's a few trees that line the edge of some of these buildings, but I wouldn't consider any of them heavily wooded areas. It's a largely vacant site.
I think that was one of the issues that I'd had prior comments on the existing conditions plan. And one aspect of it that didn't show up, I don't believe, on the existing conditions plan, it doesn't show existing vegetation. So that was a comment. And that's probably why this is marked.
Yeah, I think the EAF mapper also includes probably the rear portion of the site, where there might be more trees and more heavily wooded areas. But in our development area, it's really heavily.
Right. Well, yeah, so, but that's why I asked for the vegetation, only in the area of disturbance.
Understood.
So hopefully that will resolve it when that's added to the plan.
Are you requesting surveyed locations for all existing trees?
I would not think so.
No, not normally.
If we were talking about a, you know, a fairly natural area with a lot of significant, potentially significant trees, we would, but.
You should be able to, you know, what I've seen happen before is areas are outlined to show where there's a cluster of trees. And it just didn't happen to be on the existing conditions plan yet, so.
Understood, there's not many trees, I think that's the reason behind it.
So it'd probably be easy to do, okay. Board have any questions about? No?
Nope.
Next item on page, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Because I really need to understand this. We're concerned about trees around buildings that are basically dilapidated, but we're not concerned about the building.
We're not concerned about what?
The building, just the trees.
Why do you say we're not concerned, why do you say we're not concerned about buildings?
Are we not concerned about the buildings? Because a bat could go in a building, correct?
Well, that's...
I'm trying to figure it out, is it just the trees?
That's not normally considered as part of a natural habitat for bats.
So it's only the trees?
Yeah, we're not gonna be looking at buildings as habitat for bats.
Okay, but, okay, and the trees are minimal?
Yes.
I just want, so is it, it's gonna be marked moderate though? I'm trying to understand what we're saying.
Right, okay, so I don't know exactly where the trees are. I can look at aerial photography, but there is an existing conditions plan sheet that had been requested as a result of our comments. And so much of the existing conditions information had been provided, but we hadn't seen the trees yet. So it may be that when they add the trees to the existing conditions plan sheet, that it will be very clear.
Jody, do you think it's a small impact?
I do.
It may be.
It may be, I can agree with you on that.
I do, I think it's, I don't think it's moderate.
At the end of the day, Jody, Jody, just so you understand, this is our document. She's writing it up for us, but it's our document.
Yeah, this is your document.
If you feel that way, this is our document, not hers.
So what do people think about changing it to small?
You wanna change it?
Yeah, let's do that, I love Jody.
Thanks.
Is that okay with everybody?
I drove onto property, I didn't even see a tree.
Yeah, I went over there, I saw, I saw a car.
So seven B could be marked as small or no?
Yes, we'll say small.
Okay, that's good. And then I think, I'm looking at the next one, then I would think seven J could also be marked small. Okay?
Yeah, I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Anything else on that section?
All right, moving on.
All right, impact on agricultural resources. Bottom of page five is marked no for obvious reasons. Top of page six, impact on aesthetic resources. It's marked yes. I'm gonna read, I don't even know if the board is aware, but I've actually tried to squeeze in a couple sentences in the header. Impacts in this section are related to the rural community and scenic character of the Route 9D gateway corridor along Route 9D, running from 9D's intersection with Interstate 84 to the north and running by the project site. As per the comprehensive plan update, CPU, including CPU objectives map, refer to CPU volume three maps. And I've marked, hang on a second here, A, CI and II, DI and II, E, F, and G, all as moderate impacts. And I'm gonna try to summarize those. Unless, do you have a question?
I wanted to hear what you asked first.
Okay, okay, okay. So A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. B, may result in the obstruction, elimination, or significant screening of one or more officially designated scenic views. Nope, I'm sorry, scratch that, not B, not B at all, pardon me. C, action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points seasonally and year-round.
And that would primarily refer to Route 9D itself, I would think.
Okay. D, situation activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the action is I, routine travel by residents, including travel to and from work, and II, recreational or tourism-based activities. And then E, action may cause diminishment of the public enjoyment and appreciation of the designated aesthetic resource. F, there are similar projects visible within the following distance of the proposed project zero to one-half mile. And I wrote in there approximately 0.2 to 0.25 miles to the storage facility south of the site. G, other impacts of storage building, 242.4 feet long, is out of character with the nearby buildings. The project involves moderate removal of vegetation of trees and bushes, and I think we're gonna change that to small. Anyway, those are all marked as moderate to large. Now, any comments, questions?
Well, let me just go to G, because I think there are really two different things there. One is the storage building being out of character with nearby buildings, and the other is the project involves moderate removal of vegetation. So I'm still a little bit concerned with the character of the storage building. So first of all, I was suggesting we add the word somewhat out of character there, but keeping that category moderate, but scratching the sentence, the project involves moderate removal of vegetation, trees, and bushes.
Just take the whole sentence out?
Take that whole sentence out, but keep in the part about the storage building and it being somewhat out of character.
All right.
And that's, I mean, these things, we're in aesthetic resources here, so I mean, they're gonna be somewhat subjective, but I didn't want to imply that if we say out of character, then it maybe, some people might think we're talking about a large impact there, and we're really not, I don't think. But I kind of agree with keeping all the other ones in that moderate category as well. It kind of, it just, it flags the fact that this is all part of the Route 9 gateway corridor, which was well-described in our comprehensive plan update. And we've been talking about this pretty much throughout the project review.
Any comments?
I'm just trying to get this whole character thing, the storage building and everything else. I have a tendency to go look at...
Bob, we can't hear you down here.
I have a tendency to go look at the property or buildings and stuff like that. What's there isn't in character.
Car wrecked.
And what exists is not in character, so I'm just, I'm just kinda wondering why we're, you know, going through this thing of saying something about the, you know, the storage building being out of character, but if you've been down to the property, like the gentleman that came up before, it's quite like a junkyard. So I just, this is my thought process. I've been sitting here quietly, but...
No, 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 don't be sorry, this is your, ultimately, your decision-making document, so it needs to be what the board, you know, wants it to be.
The way it is, you know, I'm not taking choice about how the documents are, but, like, you know, it doesn't seem like anything is ever really a major or large impact. That's it.
Yeah, well, it's marked moderate.
Yeah. Too large. But then it said like it was moderate, but really not a large moderate. It's kind of like on the bottom side of moderate.
Right, just, yeah, and I want to mark it the way you want it to be. Like, if you think it's small, then we should change it, right?
Let me just add something here. We're not there yet, but when we talk about seventeen and eighteen, talking about, again, consistency with community plans and character with the area, we actually do have some specific wording about the project involves site redevelopment, which may improve the character of the area. And that's repeated a couple of times in there. So I don't know that I would be too concerned about the fact that these aesthetic checklists are indicating moderate as opposed to large, because I don't think that's gonna be moving it up into the category of significant impacts. And I think that's the key to what we're gonna have to decide. But if others have, you know, a different way of stating it, we can certainly consider changing it to small impact, I just think.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, Bob, just to clarify for you, the moderate impact here is not, you're correct, it's gonna look much better, right? Place is gonna look so much better. But it's just the size is out of character. Not that, that whole area just definitely looks ugly, but the size is what we're talking about, not really, you know, making it look worse. That would be out of character, right?
Feel it's the size of what though?
The building, that one building.
The size of the...
The storage building.
The storage building.
Yes, so that's out of character. But the applicants have done a lot to make it look better.
We have a lot of areas in Fishkill where things look perhaps out of character, and I do think honestly that that's a little bit subjective.
Of course.
I could look at it and say, oh, that's not too bad, but if I'm living next to it, I might go, oh, that's horrendous. So I think, I'm trying, really trying hard to understand. I agree totally with Bob. It's gonna be a significantly large improvement. I mean, really, it's gonna be an improvement, but I would side with Bob. I think it's a different...
But I think it's not a matter of siding. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
I'm just saying I agree with Bob, that I think, I don't know that that's the word I'm gonna use.
Well, I don't know that I heard Bob say we shouldn't use the word moderate, but I guess we're discussing that now, and if...
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, I, it's, you know, when I'm working with this form, I'm handing you something with little teeny-weeny asterisks, because it's the only way to fit it all on this form. So I kind of came up with a system, and I've seen other planners or environmental folks use it, where if it's no, you're just checking no. If it's a small impact, you're checking that left column that says no or small, and you're putting one asterisk, so that would be small. And then when you go to the right column that says moderate or large, if it's moderate, you just put two little asterisks. And if it's large, it's three. You know, and large implies, oh, you may have one significant impact, and you could ask for an EIS. And I'm not, don't, you know, I'm just saying, that's the scale of things. I want to make sure that when this gets finalized, it's the way the planning board sees it. I've drafted it, but I'm not a decision-maker, I'm a consultant. So I want to make sure that...
So when you're driving, going north on 9D, this is gonna be the first large quote building you're going to see before the stadium. There's nothing else, I don't believe, and I go there not that frequently, but I believe that's all you see, everything else is. I go there not that frequently, but I believe that's all you say, everything else is.
So if you want to put it that way.
I think that's probably right.
Leave it at moderate.
Just one more thing. In terms of the level of analysis needed for this site redevelopment, I hadn't even thought that there was any necessity to do a visual impact analysis. In my opinion, it doesn't rise to that level, because it is redevelopment. The site looks like how it looks, and it's going to be redeveloped. But there could be some level of significance to the visual. But what they've provided, you know, I thought a lot about this. What's been provided, in my opinion, as a planner professional, is sufficient for the board to be able to evaluate well enough how it's going to look and to evaluate the impact.
And I'll just add that over the period of reviews, where architectural designs for the self-storage facility itself have been revised several times to, I think, make the appearance of the self-storage facility better. It's still, I still believe it's somewhat out of scale with the concept of the Gateway Corridor, but it's an allowed use, and it's, you know, I think they've made it about as good as it could possibly look at this point.
And the landscaping is quite high-quality, what's proposed.
So, bottom line, are we, I don't know if there's a consensus, but are we okay with leaving the moderate checked categories for those? I'm okay with it?
I believe so.
Some hesitation on a couple of members, but overall, we're okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on.
Okay. Bottom one, impact on historic and archaeological resources. There's a blurb in there that acknowledges the submitted letter from OPRHP dated July 6, 2023, stating no properties, including archaeological and/or historic resources listed in or eligible for New York State National Register of Historic Places will be impacted by the project. So that's a no impact. And then going on to page seven, there are no impacts on open space and recreation. That's question 11 in the middle of page seven. There are no critical environmental areas. So that's marked no. Number 12, going on to page eight. Impact on transportation is marked yes. This is question number 13, top of page eight. Marked yes with a small impact under 13A. Project traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network. That's small. And then moving down to items D, E, and F, those are all marked, nope, sorry. D and E are marked as moderate impacts. And those are, the proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations, and the proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people or goods. So those are both moderate impacts. And then F, under other impacts, I've written into this draft, "The project may adversely impact traffic, access, circulation, and pedestrian safety on New York State Route 9D with additional points of access near a busy intersection," and there's another little asterisk, sorry. "The New York State DOT has provided preliminary, has provided preliminary comments and will have further input." So that, item 13F, other impacts, is marked with three asterisks, which means it's a large impact. That's the way I've drafted it.
So I think we'll need to decide if we want to, as an example, change that F from large to moderate. Something I had been thinking about, I had a question mark there. Again, it's really, we've talked for many meetings about access and circulation, and as Liz has indicated, New York State DOT will have further, not only further input, but some actual decisions about how the overall access and improvements along Route 9D are going to work. So I was sort of torn. I mean, I think I could go along with either moderate or large on that one.
Which one?
For F I'm talking about.
I think it's large, and I think we're missing that the project is going to require heavy usage of a private road in order to properly function.
That's my concern.
This is large, and I'm not backing down from that.
Okay.
That's my big concern.
And I also think A should be moderate, because the increase is going to exceed the capacity of Pappas Lane.
Okay, so.
That is being not counted, I think, when we say moderate, we're thinking 9D. Pappas Lane is going to be heavily affected, and there's no two ways about it.
Okay, let me, so it's increased traffic on Pappas Lane.
So we're changing A to moderate.
Yeah.
From small. I'll go along with that. And we're, so far, it sounds like we're keeping item F as large with the rationale that we're not just talking about Route 9D, but we're also talking about Pappas Lane requiring heavy improvements to be able to make this, that work as an access point.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may offer just one piece of, or a couple pieces of information for consideration.
Sure.
In reference to item D, I know it was marked a moderate impact, degrading existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. I would contend that, given that we're proposing sidewalk along the entire frontage that doesn't currently exist today, proposing to, as you're aware, the access to the diner, the access to the existing service station and convenience store, effectively, you know, just open curb cuts along Route 9D today. So the fact that we're proposing dedicated sidewalk along our frontage, restricting those access points, and again, discussed, you know, proposing a crosswalk across Route 9D as well at the signalized intersection. You know, based on that, that we're offering as a proposal, I wouldn't consider that to be a detrimental impact. I would certainly view that as an improvement over existing conditions.
Do you know what type of restaurant you're putting in?
We don't.
Is it McDonald's?
We don't, yes, sir.
So if you get something like McDonald's, you've got a big lot of traffic, or Burger King, or one of those.
Yeah, we're talking about just the pedestrian traffic along.
Yeah, I know that.
Now.
But that's a walk to the stadium.
So I hate the way some of these standard wordings are done by, not, I mean, not that it's DEC's fault, but the way these are worded, that sort of forces you to answer it one way or the other. And degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. I think it probably should have said degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle safety. And in fact, can we change that word?
You can, it's your form.
This is just suggested wording.
So in other words, D would say the proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle safety? And cross out accommodations?
The proposed action has the potential to. And that, so let me just, before I forget it. So the proposed action has the potential to degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle safety. And in response to that potential impact, the applicant has proposed sidewalks going basically along the entire frontage, although I've said a couple of times that it would be better to close off the gas station access entirely and have that sidewalk go all the way through to the intersection. But that's, that's something DOT will end up having to decide. But I think if we alter the wording in D to fit how we sort of would like it to read, and then say moderate impacts in the determination of significance, we can then expand on the wording to indicate more about what the sidewalks will do, how they'll work, the crosswalk that we had talked about at several of the last meetings, and the various pedestrian improvements that have been talked about with the project. And then I think we'll be okay with having those as moderate impacts. But I agree entirely that I think it's sort of very misleading to just say the action will degrade existing pedestrian accommodations. There really aren't any.
And that's the point that I just wanted to make, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with you, it sort of forces you into answering it one way or the other, based on the way it's written.
So I'm glad to hear our consultant's opinion that we can change the wording of the actual EAF and then expand on it in our own documents.
It's your document ultimately.
Yes. You hear that, DEC? No, I.
Dominic, can I ask you, I mean, can we change the wording of an EAF? To my understanding, I didn't think, I didn't think we could.
No. I think there's no harm to a foul here by, you know, making a clarification as to how that stands in this regard. And so, I mean, these are forms that are put out by DEC, to your point. And you can adopt your own form, as I understand it, that DEC, but no one virtually ever does. I mean, unless you object, you know, that.
Is the word question degrade?
Well, well, there's another way to handle this. You could kind of do both.
Can we just add it?
That would just say, the proposed action will degrade, there'd be a big asterisk down there, and that would continue as it is, and then, and then we'll add the sentence that the proposed action has the potential to degrade existing bicycle or pedestrian safety. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it makes a difference.
So you're saying check D as no or moderate, and then just add another note to F?
No, I was saying, we'd still leave it as moderate, but we would make a little note next to that word degrade, and then show the wording that the board has just described.
Yeah, I have no problem with either way, just so that we get that additional wording in there.
I mean, ultimately, it's a tool that leads to a secret negative declaration, and when we're stating the reasoning in this secret negative declaration, it doesn't have to adhere to the language of the form. This is.
But perhaps the cleanest way would be to add it as a separate sentence in F.
Okay.
Add it in a separate sentence as F, okay.
I don't mind doing that.
Okay.
No, actually, that's, I was talking about D with that whole, the way that, that.
I know, yeah.
I was only talking about D.
That's what I mean, yeah, but then what do we do with D, do we keep it moderate?
Yeah, I would keep it moderate, and then just add that asterisk and sort of the changed wording of the sentence in the asterisk down somewhere, wherever you can fit it.
So which way are we doing it?
The way that you just suggested it.
Okay.
We're talking only about D.
We're sticking to D and adding an asterisk next to degrade, and then adding that sentence below.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing the form, right? We're not.
Correct.
We thought better of it.
I need your red pen, because this is getting really messy. No, I'm not taking it.
You can try that with the IRS.
I thank the applicant's attorney for raising the question about the appropriateness of changing the wording of the EAF. We'll have to think about that in the future and maybe submit some suggestions to DEC after all.
And then the only other point, Chairman, that I wanted to raise was just that, I know we just discussed Pappas Lane, and obviously, as part of our development proposal, we're proposing to improve the length of Pappas Lane along our frontage as well. So I know, similar to what we just spoke about in regards to adding the sidewalk and being a justification for that impact, you know, we would certainly feel that the improvements that we're doing to Pappas Lane would offset any additional traffic that would be generated to that. And certainly, you know, restricting the left turn movements to Pappas Lane through the signalized intersection would certainly be a benefit as well as opposed to having them occur at the unsignalized driveways along Route 9D.
Do you or Anthony have any further comments on that?
I do have a question about it. Because I know when you guys did the traffic study, it was, you had it as a full movement access on Route 9D, another right in, right out. And it also says two full movement driveways on Pappas. It's changed now. I mean, I really would have liked it better, the way you guys had it at first, that they could make full access on that southernmost, towards the restaurant. And I know the DOT doesn't like that, but what that's doing now is it's forcing traffic, all traffic that wants to go south on 9D, to go out Pappas Lane. It forces everybody that way. And then it restricts how many people are going to go out, right out onto, you know, go north on 9D. Some people who are going to be in the storage, they're not going to go back around towards the, towards the restaurant to make a right. So I just feel that, that we're having a problem on Pappas at this point. I'm wondering also, how does that affect your traffic study? Because your traffic study was done thinking that there were going to be more access routes on 9D. Does it make, does it change it much? And how would that impact Pappas? Because, I mean, we do have people from Pappas that are concerned about this. And I do like the fact that you're going to have a stop sign there, which is important, yes.
Certainly, and those are great questions. Fortunately, we, you know, through coordination with CPL, we have had the opportunity to update our traffic study. So the most current version does reflect the access that's proposed on this plan. So it accounts for the restrictions on Route 9D, and it accounts for the fact that the left turn movements will all be made at the signal at Pappas Lane. So we have had the opportunity to update that and reflect that accurately in the analysis.
Okay, we'll get that soon.
But weren't you still negotiating with DOT?
So we've gotten preliminary feedback, and what you see here is a result of those discussions. It was all the turning movement restrictions on 9D. We are, you're correct, we're still going through the process with DOT, but we agreed to all their requests. So we weren't pushing back on the fact that, you know, we weren't trying to fight and maintain full movement access on 9D. We conceded the fact that they had requested that. The only thing that's up for discussion still is just the access in front of the convenience store that we're proposing to maintain, is that right out driveway, but everything else we conceded too.
And what was the final, what was the conclusion for Pappas?
The conclusion was that the existing signalized intersection could accommodate that additional traffic, those left turn movements at that location without significant impacts.
But the DOT, did the, let's put it this way, did the traffic impact analysis update talk more specifically about what improvements to Pappas Lane will be required to make that work?
So from an operational standpoint, you know, we're proposing to make it a traditional 24-foot wide width. So we, as you heard the neighbor mention earlier this evening, it's, you know, effectively an unimproved roadway for a fair portion of it. So we would be making that to our rear property line where that rear access from the self-storage comes in. A traditional roadway, it'll be curbed, resurfaced, you know, with new pavement and things like that. So, and as you mentioned too, you know, we're proposing dedicated driveways. You know, right now, the access to the convenience store, as well as the access behind the convenience store that you can get to the diner from, effectively just mesh into Pappas Lane today, uncontrolled. And as you heard the neighbor mention, no one really knows who has the right of way. So we would be proposing, you know, physical curb cuts with stop signs and striping so that there's a clear delineation of who has the right of way, who is required to stop, where those turning movements are allowed to be made.
And I think something partly from one of the comments we heard at the public hearing, but just in general terms, with improvements to Pappas Lane going on, we're going to have to come up with some fairly specific construction, I don't know, conditions or directions regarding impact to the residents who are back there during construction.
Yeah, it's very typical, Mr. Chairman, as to what we do when we're doing roadway improvements. Obviously, when they're adjacent to a residential neighborhood, we need to maintain ingress and egress at all times. So typically, work with the town, work with the police department to come up with how those improvements will be phased, obviously notify the residents of when they would occur, and then work with them so that they know. You know, ultimately, what we have to do is maintain one lane of traffic at all times. So whether that's done through flaggers, police officers, whatever it may be, but we maintain ingress and egress at all times.
Not to mention fire department access in case of emergencies back there.
Correct, emergency services access as well.
But what ensures the long-term maintenance of this road? This is going to be used by the public, and it is remaining a private road. So the long-term safety of people traveling that road is a concern. What guarantees that, you know, that's a big hangup for me.
Isn't that a required improvement? So does it end up being a?
Anthony, I'm sorry, I've been a couple of them. I'm the owner developer of the property, sorry. We'll definitely, whatever we do, keeping this or selling it, we'll put it to a development agreement for the property, that the maintenance of that road, because it's a private road, will be maintained by the association that owns the development. We do have all the properties we buy, have to. And we were just talking to the attorney, but we'll get the exact line. I mean, I think five or six feet of it's on the neighbor. five or six feet of it's on the neighbor, it's like a public right of way, so we'll, we'll take care of that as well, but I think that's what it is, so we have to, there probably have to be some kind of like mutual easement or something like that of us to take care of it, but that's fine. We've done that all the time.
And also in coordination with DOT, of course.
Of course, yeah. That's what I was telling, we'd use DOT standards to build the road, we'd do half at a time, let one, one lane for the residential traffic, go over to the next one, put a joint down the middle, do the right way.
And Dominic, it's likely we would probably wanna put some kind of condition in the resolution of approval on, on that aspect.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have to come up with some good wording that'll work on that.
Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there's gotta be something in there. If this thing falls into disrepair, that this is repaired promptly, you know, it's a private road.
Yeah, certainly, you know, it's, it's in the applicant's best interest, being that it's the only means of left turn ingress or egress from the property, to make sure that it's plowed, maintained, you know, that, that's obviously what's gonna drive customers to and from this development, and if it falls into disrepair, if it's not plowed, you know, that's gonna be a significant deterrent to business, so I can assure you that Anthony wouldn't let that happen.
We only use extra space of public storage, is what's gonna be public storage. They're, you know, the largest REIT in the country, so they have contracts for all this stuff in place, and we, we decide as the owner of the building what their, call it their sphere of influence would be, like what they control, so we'll just give public storage that road, and it will be the first one plowed probably in the whole town.
Well, they go out of business.
It's one of the businesses, yes.
Yeah, they go out of business with-
Oh, no, I mean, they don't go out of business. They have, I think, the, the two companies we use are pretty large companies, I mean, they're, they're pretty well with all, and they, and they have all this stuff done before we even put them as a manager. We tell them like a month before, they'll send us all the contractors that they're using and have all the plans. They're pretty tight. They're, they're very, they're very head managers.
Dominic, this also might relate to this, normally when we do, well, we do performance bonds for completion of improvements, but we do maintenance bonds for, you know, continued maintenance for a certain amount of time for things like landscaping improvements. Might that also be a provision we can add in the maintenance bond dealing with maintenance of Pappas Lane in some way?
We'd have to consider that, you know, I mean, typically, you know, the town would not be in a position to, you know, enforce or, or go in and do work. I mean, the purpose of having a bond is to not only secure and encourage, you know, a particular owner to, to make sure that the things are maintained, but in the case that they're not maintained, for giving the opportunity to the town itself to go in and pull those funds and do work that's necessary. And in my experience, it's unlikely that towns want to get involved with maintaining private roads, because by definition, they're private. Nonetheless, I think that, to your point, that there are other potential mechanisms there. For instance, notes could be added to the plan that require maintenance at a certain level, since it's essential for access into the site, and then if, you know, in those details are, you know, that might be set forth as, plan notes aren't maintained, it could be a point of enforcement by the town. So I think that there, there are potential ways to, to secure that commitment.
Thank you for mentioning plan notes.
I love plan and notes.
I like plan notes too, because having worked in a town hall, the only thing that ever comes out of any drawer that's, you can enforce from is a plan set, and you can pull out all kinds of documents, but if it's not on the plan set, forget about it.
Agreed.
So. Good stuff.
Okay, are we ready to move on to number 14?
Let's see.
Any other questions on 13, or?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm asking the board members.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't hear any. Why don't we move on?
Okay, 15, bottom of page eight, noise, odor, and light, this may, and I'm, I've written right under the header, this may be revised.
14.
I didn't do, oh, I'm so sorry. 14, impact on energy. It's marked yes, and under no or small impact, there's an asterisk, so that's a small impact. Under item D, the proposed action may involve heating and/or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed. So I had that as small. Can I go on to 15? Okay.
Sounds good.
So 15 is noise, odor, and light impacts. It's marked yes. Up in that top area, I've typed in, "This may be revised pending further review of the proposed lighting plan." That's because there were comments last time about some glare over the property line that probably can be adjusted. And so, under item A, the proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation. Demolition and construction may result in moderate noise impact, so that's marked as a moderate impact. And then, hang on, on the next, the top of page nine, there are additional noise, odor, and light impacts. And item D, the proposed action may result in light shining onto adjoining properties. That's marked moderate, as I described. And E, the proposed action may result in lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, also marked moderate. So any questions about 14 or 15, on the bottom of page eight, and 15 on the top of page nine?
Yes, on 15B, have we asked the applicant about blasting? I don't recall that coming up, but it may have.
We did, and I was-
And if not, I'd like a note on the plans, because we've been burnt before.
Okay.
There are residences nearby, so that has to be on the plan.
Okay, so rock removal notes, and stating that there will be no blasting, or, or the conditions under which that might occur. That's typically what I see with rock removal notes.
Will you be removing the- Whatever's there, the existing-
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Will you be removing the existing, like, macadam and all that tar, you know, like, concrete and everything?
There won't be any blasting.
No, there won't be any blasting. I know, no, no, I know there's be no blasting, but we're talking about material removal and all that stuff before, and I know there's blacktop and concrete existing and everything else. That will be all just with site development, like, in other words, gonna be bulldozed?
Most of the developed sites where we're developing, the rest of it's really undeveloped in the back, so all that will be removed and recycled, or removed offsite.
Okay.
So in other words, we're hearing that there will be no blasting proposed, and there should be a note on the plans to that effect?
Yes.
And then just one note about the lighting. The resubmitted lighting plan reduced the spillover that was previously at the property lines, and we are now under the town code. We also did a dark sky analysis, and we are also not shining any lights. That would be-
Is this the submittal that's coming?
The set of plans that you have in front of you.
From February?
The lighting plan, yeah.
No, I, I did comment February 2nd, and I, I don't, is there a new submittal that I missed?
No.
I, I had-
There's no new submittal since the February meeting.
I, it's a very specific comment in there where it talked about lighting over the line, and I'm pretty sure it's in the, off of the boundary that is parallel to the parking for the restaurant. There is a whole lineup. I can, I can show you on screen if, if we have any other offline consultation, but let me find the comment.
If, if there was a missed spot, we'll make sure to update that and not-
Yeah, I think that's what happened, is I had made the comment, and I was waiting for it to be fixed.
There's a point two right here.
Yeah, well-
And it needs to be point one. We will adjust that. Not a problem.
Where's zero?
Thank you, Liz.
So let me just ask, because what we're gonna do is there are a number of revisions to this EAF Part II that will ask you to complete the revisions for the April meeting. But-
Yes.
I'm just wondering how this sort of parenthetical statement, "This may be revised pending further review of the proposed lighting plan." I guess as a flag to make sure that that is done, we could keep it in there, but that's not what we will be wanting to approve when we approve a revised EAF. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
We don't want wording that says-
In other words, in other words, when the new plans are submitted, if that lighting issue is addressed, in other words, the plans are revised to address that item, that I would get rid of that statement.
Yeah, like the comment removes from the EAF, yeah.
And change it to small.
And, yeah, then, right, so both of those, D and E, could be changed to small if, if that is what happens.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
John, I have a question.
Okay.
They said there's no blasting, and I get that right now, but what if they find out that they have to blast something, what you just said? Do they have to come back here, or can they go and get a blasting permit?
Well, that obviously happened at certain other developments that we know of. So what I would suggest is that we add not only a note on the plans that there shall be no blasting, but also a condition, perhaps stating that there shall be no blasting, and if blasting does become required, that we'll have to come back to the planning board for further review, or something to that effect.
Like an amendment?
Those aren't the right words, but you know what I'm saying, don't you?
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think we should be-
If blasting required, then?
Applicant is not currently proposing blasting, but should that change, the applicant will have to come back to request approval for blasting, or something to that effect.
And there's new code?
If, if I may, like, on that particular point, I mean, typically, I mean, the planning board, in my mind, you know, thinking about the categories of approvals of projects, and I get, and in this case, you have site plan approval for a project. It's not, in my mind, necessarily a site plan element. You're considering the impacts of blasting as a result, as it relates to the environmental impacts as lead agency.
Right.
But I'm not sure that an amended site plan would be needed, because they would be looking to try to actually build the project as, as approved, for instance.
Well, I guess the, the way I'd think of it is the amended site plan, if blasting were going to be incorporated, would require taking another look at the environmental assessment on that particular category, which is not common, I know, but again, we have been burnt before, and I don't want that to happen again. Now, there is a new law that the town board did pass.
Yeah, but I don't remember-
But it's really just a notification requirement to neighbors.
It's a notification. It went from, I think, 500 feet to 1,000 feet. Am I correct, Debbie? I, I think, I think it's like 1,000 feet they have to be, they have to be notifying.
This is a notification, it has nothing to do with what Johnny said.
And I think there was something else with it too.
Well, they have to make application with the building department.
The town board has to be notified when a blasting permit is issued. The town board needs to be advised, because that was happening, and nobody knew what- But I think we should also be advised. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I think it should be more than we should be advised. I think it should be-
I mean, for the planning board, we should be advised if there's blasting going.
So maybe, so Dominic, if you can think about this a little more for how a condition could be worded that might sort of connect it together back to the presumed neg deck that we might be seeking here, because it seems like that may be the direction we're going.
Yes, and I think language to that effect could be added to the neg deck.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that the negative declaration perhaps was predicated, at least in part, on the fact that the applicant has said that there's no blasting that will be occurring.
Okay, you got that? Liz, that would be important, I think.
I, I apologize. I have a question, Mr. Chairman. What do we say?
Let me just make sure.
Sure.
Do you have that? Okay.
I, I have that, but I wanna, I guess, we're not talking about a conditional neg deck. We're talking about saying that the neg deck is based on no blasting.
Correct.
And that if it turns out there would have to be blasting, there would have to be some kind of an amended neg deck, and that, I guess, would presume there's an amended application.
I mean, Secret doesn't really contemplate that process. What it would, you know, do, I mean, one of the steps that the board could take, although it seems rather extreme, would be to rescind the neg deck because of blasting, but-
But that would require the applicant coming back to the board, seeking something. I guess that something is what I'm looking for, what we, what we should say.
I, I guess I've, I've worked in other communities where they did have rock removal and blasting law, and so there was this elaborate set of notes that indicated what was intended, but that, that one of the last clauses might be something like, if blasting is required, you know, full compliance with any blasting permit requirements. So it's right there on the plan, but I don't know, I haven't seen the law to know that.
And I'm not sure that would really do the job for what I'm, what some of us are thinking that didn't happen with the previous project that I think we all are aware of.
Can I ask a question to two guys, engineers, like, you guys have taken a survey of the property, right? And, and where you're gonna be building and everything else, do you see and foresee any reason of hitting bedrock, or?
We have no anticipation of blasting on site.
And then as far as before, what I was trying to say, removing material, the tonnage and everything else, if the property is already developed and has blacktop and concrete and cinder block, that's a lot of tons of material that has to be scraped away, because you're not gonna build on top what's there. That's what, that's what I was just asking before. I'm not, I think maybe people were thinking of, once you remove that material, are you gonna remove more material, meaning the dirt and the soil?
Correct. Demo is not typically considered as part of that removal.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
And, and for, if there's any rock removal, I think you're talking ripping and hammering and that kind of?
Correct. We'd be happy to put a note on the plans that says there will be no blasting.
Yeah, any kind of notation. I, I would suggest if you can do some kind of explanatory rock removal notation, so that's right.
The town has a code that has provisions, so we'll just reference the code.
Felix, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I do.
We would put in the developer agreement that we won't do any blasting. We're not gonna blast. If we have to remove any rock, it'll be chipping. There'd be no blasting at all. We'll commit to that. Any way you guys feel comfortable, we'll commit to that. Yeah.
And if you do, you're just gonna hammer it.
Correct. We'll just chip. I mean, whatever commitment you need, we'll, we're there.
So Dominic, maybe we can, the attorneys can, you know, work together on some kind of-
Sure, and we can add a note to the plan that says there will be no blasting.
Yeah.
Period.
Period.
And that, we'll cover.
Okay.
Understand the concern, but just wanna put it to bed. We're not, not gonna do it.
Dominic?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that enough to stop it, though, if they needed to do it? Because I'm not clear, if we say no, does our no really stick?
I believe so.
Because I distinctly remember a project where we were told, no blasting, and then there was blasting. So I'm just saying.
Well, we could expand on that note and say, you know, I mean, there, I mean, there will be no blasting, but if there is blasting, then they have to return to the planning board.
I'm just, I don't wanna see what happened to me happen to other people. And that's why I'm on this board, and so, you know, if there's a way to, it's all great and good, I get it. They're, they're gonna, they have plans, but plans change, and I can give you multiple examples. And they change on the fly. Oh, we gotta go this direction, we gotta, because they don't know what they're gonna get into. You don't know. There could be crap under the ground or something. Who knows? But I'm just saying.
That's why this is a, if I may, you, you're striking right at the heart of, like, what the nature of planning is. There's planning, and then there's also construction, you know, which happens afterwards with the best planning. What did Eisenhower say? Planning was essential, but then once you start, the plans are useless.
Exactly. Kind of that's what I'm saying nicely.
Okay, well, it's, it sounded like- Okay, well, it sounded like.
Well, I'm saying it as nicely as I can.
It sounded like the applicant's attorney would be perfectly happy to work out some kind of a further developers' agreement, as you called it, or some kind of a document that would go beyond what the note on the site plan will say. And it can make it clear that should there be that point 00001 chance that there might be blasting someday, the applicant will come, will have to come back to the planning board for review and approval of that. Basically, in layperson's language. Okay?
Felix, any question?
No, I'm, at this point, if they're happy, I'm ready to move forward. Okay. Guess I wasn't happy.
All right, Liz, I think we're looking for you to move us on to the next item.
I think it's impact on human health.
Yep.
Okay. And that one is marked no. That's number 16 on page nine. And now we're on page 10. Consistency with community plans, it's marked yes. The blurb up in the top under number 17 says, impacts in this section are related to the rural community and scenic character of Route 9D Gateway Corridor along Route 9D, running from 90's intersection with Interstate 84 to the north and running by the project site, as per the CPU Volume 1 Goal Section I. And the CPU objectives map refer to CPU Volume 3 maps. Numerous variances and waivers will be required. The project involves site redevelopment, which may improve the character of the area. And then 17A is marked as a moderate impact. The proposed action's land use components may be different from or in sharp contrast to the current surrounding land use patterns. I don't know if you want me to keep reading this, or do you want to go question by question on this page? If you want me to read all the other impacts and then go back?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll keep going. Item 17C, the proposed action is inconsistent with local land use plans or zoning regulations, and that's marked as a moderate impact. And again, referencing that little paragraph above. Item D, the proposed action is inconsistent with any county plans or other regional land use plans, and that's marked as a moderate impact. Refer to Duchess County Greenway Guides B3 Building in Context, C1 Commercial Strip Development, and C2 Regarding Circulation. See the Town Official Code, Chapter 150, Zoning Sections 150-2, 150-100, 150-144E, including reference to the Greenway Guides. And the next item, 17E, is marked as a small impact. It is, proposed action may cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure or is distant from existing infrastructure. And then the next impact under 17 is H. The project involves construction of a large building 242.4 feet long, changing the character of the area visible from the Route 90 Gateway Corridor, and that is marked as a moderate impact. So all of those under 17 are moderate. Any comments or questions about those?
And that H category, moderate, is basically the same that we checked under the aesthetic resources category, so that's consistent with that. I think I'm okay with the way you've marked them all here.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
All right, so I'm going to go on to 18. Consistency with community character, it's marked yes. The paragraph that's written there, I'm not going to reread it because it's the same as the one under 17. And what we have marked there is 18B, the proposed action may create a demand for additional community services, e.g., schools, police, and fire. That's marked as a small impact. And then moving down to 18D, the proposed action may interfere with the use or enjoyment of officially recognized designated public resources. That's marked as a moderate impact. E, the proposed action inconsistent with predominant architectural scale and character, marked also moderate. And then moving down to G, other impacts, the project involves construction of a large building 242.4 feet long, changing the character of the area visible from the Route 9D Gateway Corridor, and that's also marked as a moderate impact. Questions, comments?
I think those all look good to me.
Agreed.
Okay, and, I mean, I don't think there's much to say about part three. It's just, there's some information on it, but it says on the first page of part three, in that space, whether you can see it or not, it says, a draft secret declaration notice of determination of significance or non-significance will be prepared at a later date.
So that's really just a placeholder, because once we complete our discussion on the EAF part two, we're going to talk about what's the next step.
Right, and it's a type 1 action, all parts have been done. That's, that's really solely have.
And then, yeah, then, right, we'll have to indicate whether it's going to be A, B, or C on the back part of, on the back part of the document page two, whether it's a neg deck, a pos deck, or somewhere in between, which it really can't be. So, all right, well, so first of all, are there any other questions, comments, or any other revisions that we didn't talk about on the EAF part two that you would like to at this point? Because I think if there are no more questions or comments, we're going to sort of talk a little bit about the next steps of this. So anyone? Okay, so it seems to me that after reviewing the EAF part two and having CPL incorporate the revisions that we discussed tonight, seems that the board could consider moving ahead with a draft neg deck for the April meeting.
Yeah.
We closed the public hearing, so that's not really a question right now. So I am going to ask for a motion, but are there any thoughts from board members or from our consultants before we move on to an actual motion?
I think this, there's a lot of significant impacts here. I'm honestly on the side of this being pos deck. I think there's just a lot of issues with traffic and safety. I think people making left turns into the site is incredibly dangerous, and it will be. There's two lanes going in that direction. I just think, you know, I know the applicant's done their part in trying to address a lot of those items, but I still see this as a pos deck.
So, well, I will ask other board members what they think, but what would you base that on in terms of what we did with the EAF part two? I think we would have to do some serious revisions to that if we were going to do a pos deck, and we'd have to be very specific on what those were. Why don't we get a sense of other board members before we even think about doing that? Again, as I said, my, my way of looking at it is we've gone through the EF part two in a lot of detail, a lot of discussion. We're having some, we're requesting some revisions to it, but it seems to me to be pointing in the direction from a, as scientifically based rationale as we can do, to be pointing towards a neg deck. What do other board members think? Because we're going to have to make, make a decision about that.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that I'm going, I'm leaning towards a neg deck. I think there are issues with the traffic, but I think that's being addressed, and, you know, DOT is, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, DOT is taking control of that from us. You know, I would have liked to have seen full access on that southernmost, but, you know, but I think the applicant's doing, what needs to be done to, to address the impacts.
Fred?
I don't know how much negotiation you can do with DOT, because it sounds like what we want and DOT wants are two different things.
Well, whatever DOT does is not going to make everybody happy, obviously, but when you say two different things, you may be talking about.
Ingress and egress.
So what are your, what are you weighing towards in terms of what you would like to see?
Well, I know you guys live near the property, and you see it all the time. I only go by it once in a while, but I see the traffic increasing greatly into this project. Now, I might be wrong, because they had all those buses going in and everybody else, but, you know, and I don't know what that, how that's going to change. But if you put a fast food restaurant there, and the car wash, you know, gas station's the gas station. The storage, I don't see much traffic increasing or decreasing, you know, overall.
Yeah. I think in terms of traffic generation in general, I think the fact that the self-storage facility is there, in some ways, kind of counterbalances the increases that you would see from, in particular, the fast food restaurant. That's the main one. The car wash, I don't think has generated a lot more traffic than would be at the gas station anyway. It's not going to be your, like, top of the line car wash.
All right, so if somebody's coming up from the south, they can turn right into the project. And if they're leaving, only if they're going to go north can they leave through that same. If not, they have to go around to the light.
Yes, yeah.
And then there's no other way except for those two entrances, except for the other private driveway way to the north of the property. And I don't understand, who gets to use that private driveway?
What private driveway?
You mean private road, the Pappas Lane?
No.
You mean the internal circulation on the site.
Which driveway are you talking about?
I look on that map, and I look to the left-hand side of the map, which is the north side of the map.
Okay.
And that's just private.
That's the private road, Pappas?
And that's Pappas.
Yeah, that's the private.
So who uses Pappas?
Anybody uses Pappas right now.
Part of the development.
Yeah, anybody uses Pappas.
So that, so the development in the back will not have any access to get into this project at all?
The Pappas Lane is part of the project development. That's a main way of accessing all the driveways into the site.
It's on the site.
It's on the site.
So they can enter from the Pappas Lane?
They're going to be improving it, I believe, to 24 feet?
Where? Where's the light that's now? Existing light, is that on Pappas or is that in the middle?
Pappas and 19.
How long are we doing this?
Yeah, Pappas and 19.
Pappas and 90 junction.
I'm concerned with the traffic that's, you know.
I mean, it is.
The rest of the, I'm not concerned with anything else that we've discussed in any of the other items except for traffic.
And going.
And, you know.
Going back to it. Sorry.
No, you go.
Oh, I was going to say, going back to what Anthony said before, I went and looked back through, even with all the discussion, the one impact that remains potentially large is item, excuse me, 13F.
Which is what?
Traffic.
Which is traffic, and it's, the project may adversely affect traffic access, excuse me, circulation and pedestrian safety on New York State Route 90 with additional points of access near a busy intersection. And, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we have one potentially large impact, it's possible that the board could consider a positive declaration. Dominic, is that right?
Yes.
But to go from large to significant, we'd have to be explaining that a lot more.
Correct.
We'd have to be very clear about it. And I asked the question when Anthony brought that up, is, well, what specifically would we add? And then I wanted to get a sense from everybody on the board as to where we were leaning, because if we're leaning towards a neg deck, we wouldn't have to get into that lengthy discussion, which will take probably another meeting. And I don't mind staying here till 11:00 if it takes that long. I'm hoping we don't have to, but I'm hoping that the rest of the board members will weigh in clearly and quickly on, if there is some sense of a neg deck, then we won't have to take that much longer. And that shouldn't be the main decision point, but I'm hearing sort of a mixed bag right now, so let's.
I mean, coming, coming from the north, you have two lanes heading towards 84. Anybody who wants to make a left into that, into that development is going to use the left of those two lanes. That is not a turn, really a turning lane. People don't really queue there right now. You're, you're basically changing the behavior of all the people who travel that road, who fly down those two lanes, who are going to, all of a sudden, now going to have to slam on the brakes because somebody wants to make a left in here. You're changing the attitudes, you know, the drivers. It's just, I think it's very unsafe.
But there is a turning lane.
Yeah, that's correct.
There is a turning lane, yes. There is a turning lane there.
I think a lot more cars are going to be queuing, that's for sure.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
I apologize. I just wanted to point out that the access that's proposed, the restrictions, the turning movement restrictions, that was all, I mean, obviously, we got the feedback from DOT, but it was consistent with the feedback that we got from CPL as well. You know, originally, we were going, there was a lot of back and forth because we were pushing for more than what CPL had asked for, and then DOT confirmed what CPL had asked for. So at that point, we saw that the town's consultant and the state both said, you need to restrict these turning movements. So we agreed at that point that you need to restrict these turning movements. And there is a dedicated left turn lane at that signalized intersection for vehicles to make a left turn in the Pappas Lane. So it's not from an actual through lane of travel. It's done at a signalized access point in a dedicated turning lane.
Do you know how many cars can queue up on that?
I don't specifically, but I know that in our analysis, we looked at the existing and resulting queue, and it wouldn't extend beyond what the storage capacity is in that lane. I don't specifically recall what the capacity is.
I mean, I'm on it all the time, but I don't know how many cars can queue up. Not many, okay.
And I mean, we did still have traffic comments that remain to be addressed, but I, I mean, I won't know the answer until we have the new submittal with the new traffic study and our traffic person takes a look.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I realize I'm not voting on this, so I won't comment on the positive or negative tech direction, but it seems to me that the commercial success of the areas that are going to be built here is dependent upon increased traffic, increased visits to those particular establishments that are planned and are developed. And I think we've talked a lot about traffic and the mitigation of those traffics with the back and forth between the clients. We've, we've agreed to those, and it's up to the DOT at this particular point to give their, their inputs to this thing. It's a state road 9D, right? So to some extent, there could be fixes to the traffic if, in fact, state Route 9D was changed, but that's not under our auspices, as far as I can see. So to me, traffic is the key to the success of the commercial establishments of this, this development. And, and as you said, John, the, the fast food restaurant, the, you know, et cetera, is dependent upon additional visits, which is directly tied to traffic. And then the sidewalks is directly tied to foot traffic, which is associated with the state, with the stadium, potentially. So, I mean, traffic is the issue. And I think we've, they've addressed it.
Liz, let me just go back to what you said before, that you're still waiting on more information. Is that specific to transportation and traffic?
They're still, in the, in the comment memorandum of February 2, 2026, there are traffic comments beginning on page nine and going to the top of page 11. And, I mean, I would anticipate that there has been progress on the traffic study in response to the traffic, our traffic engineer's comments, CPL's traffic engineer. So I would anticipate that they would try to address all or most of those comments in their next submittal. I know that he, our traffic engineer was still quite concerned about the one-way out right near that intersection. out right near that intersection, because it's only 50 feet. So somebody's pulling out. It's 50 feet. There's an intersection. 50 feet is nothing.
Right.
So, anyway, that, you know.
That's not going to be, we want, that won't be clear until DOT actually does something in terms of final approval. So we're not going to get more information on that, I don't think, at this
Well.
at this point of the process.
At this point in the process, no, but, um, I would hope that a lot of the traffic comments would be addressed, because the only individual that you have that's qualified to advise the planning board about traffic issues is the planning consultants, the traffic consultant from CPL's team. I understand that New York State DOT has the final say.
So in a minute, I'll, I don't happen to have that CPL memo in front of me, but in a minute, not right now, because I'll, I want to go back to the applicant, I'll ask you to sort of maybe reiterate what those transportation, traffic comments were. We heard already a discussion about the improvements to Pappas Lane, and that was a key thing that we talked about, and I feel a lot more comfortable about that, although I think Anthony maybe doesn't. But, you know, with some additional wording in the neg deck and in conditions of approval, I think those can be addressed in terms of ongoing maintenance to Pappas Lane. But anyway, go ahead.
I just wanted to address Liz's comment about the outstanding February 2nd memo, all the comments, that we made a decision. We were going to come here today, receive all the comments from your board, anything from the public, and then put together one comprehensive comment response to, to all those comments. So it's not, we're not ignoring it. We know, yeah, we know that it's there.
That's why I keep saying I anticipate.
Correct. And we're certainly, that is our intent.
Good. Thank you for that. And what I, I think what I'm trying to get out of tonight's discussions and review is a sense of whether we can move ahead with directing, Liz, to prepare a draft neg deck based on what we've talked about, because that's the sense I'm getting of our discussion on the draft EAF. Not, it's not pointing to me towards a pos deck, but it may be to others. And I'm trying to get definitive feedback from the other board members, so we, it may not be unanimous, but we can at least
Doesn't have to be.
have a vote on moving ahead.
Well, if I may, you know, on that point, you know, one, one of the prime reasons of considering a positive declaration is, part of that analysis is whether or not there's a significant adverse impact that the applicant has not yet proposed mitigation for. But the other real benefit of going through an EIS process is to require an applicant to consider mitigation measures and additional alternatives. If traffic is the primary concern that's driving consideration of positive declaration, you have to be, bear in mind that you're constrained, as I believe others have pointed out, that, you know, the, the board doesn't have jurisdiction over the, over the state highway. And so going to be limited to some extent, so there could be, this could end up being, to some extent, an exercise in requiring additional analyses and, and alternatives that ultimately are rejected by the DOT. So it's kind of driven, uh, traffic issues for this particular site, given this layout and its, uh, its fact that it is on the state highway, are going to be overseen primarily by the DOT.
And of course, if we, well, either way, we'll be having to coordinate further with New York State DOT. So if we came up with a suggested neg deck and decided to pursue that at the next meeting, that would be circulated to DOT, and they would have that information to make, to help them with their further decisions that they have to make.
Correct.
If, on the other hand, we went with a pos deck, I'm not so sure we would really hear all that much more from DOT, because they kind of tend to make their own decisions based on what they know anyway.
Correct.
And I think that's probably what you were kind of trying to say. But summing it up in, in, uh, planning board language, it just seems to me like a more efficient way of doing this would be through a neg deck and, and moving ahead with it, so we can, in effect, allow DOT to, you know, start moving ahead with their decisions on what's going to happen. And what, primarily whether it's going to be some other improvements to the, the turning lane on the Pappas Lane, or whether it's going to be closing off the gas station entrance, or any number of other things. DOT has already weighed in on the sidewalk, and the, I think I heard last meeting, at the extending the sidewalk slightly, slightly into the, the, the Route 90 right-of-way to allow it to bend a little bit away from the gas station pumps. And they've already, DOT has already weighed in on the restrictions on the other access points. So, I mean, that's kind of a thumbnail sketch of what's, what's been happening so far. Anyway, Liz, have you had a chance to kind of find the points?
Oh, yeah.
Transportation, traffic, and just sort of maybe quickly summarize what those are that
Yeah.
in your mind we're still waiting for?
Let's see. So I'm looking at the memorandum, February 2, 2020, 20, February 2, 2024. Uh, hang on, let me just find the ones that. He has a question about traffic generation, item 32B, um, counts conducted for the gas station and convenience store, for the calculations shown on table five. The statement is confusing. Were these volumes calculated using ITE data for a gas station? It is unclear. Volumes can't be confirmed. Uh, let's see. I'm trying to find a way to summarize this. New volumes from the fast food restaurant are not being calculated correctly with subtracting pass-by volumes. The bottom line total appears to add up to the total pass-by and new primary volumes correctly. However, this was confusing and needed to be manually checked. Correct this table. Um, trip generation was corrected. Future capacity analysis, hang on a second here. He's acknowledging the changes that were made, um, to points of access. And then, um, NICE dot comments required about the queue capacity of turn lanes at the Route 90 and Pappas Lane intersection. This study should include analysis of the no-build and build condition, 95 percentile percent, I'm sorry, 95% queue lengths compared to the existing approach lane lengths.
Yeah, that's, that seemed to be one that stood out in my mind that was particularly important, which I think the applicants have said has been added to the updated traffic impact study, which we will need to see soon.
And then, again, I'm looking at 35A3, eastern driveway, gas station should be removed completely due to the proximity of the intersection. Site plans and traffic study have retained this driveway as right out. Only a follow-up submission will be required to NICE dot for their approval as they determine if the highway work permit is granted for this project.
Right. Yep.
Hang on, let me just see. And his findings and conclusions, bullet one provides, this is their findings and conclusions. He's commenting on them. Bullet one provides trip volumes, which are not consistent with the updated trip calculations. Present table five revised. Bullet two seems to state the central driveway is right out only as noted in previous comments. This is incorrect. Revised. So he's looking for bits of accuracy that need to be addressed.
So a lot of
They came a long way on the traffic study.
Yeah, and a lot of what the CPL traffic engineer was looking for were corrections rather than changes, because I think he's acknowledging that, as, as I have also stated many times, I'd prefer to see the gas station entrance closed, but that's going to be up to DOT. That's not going to happen prior to making a, a pos or a neg deck. And so I think the bottom line is, the sooner we can get the revised, updated traffic impact study, um, sooner than the submission date, hopefully, for the April meeting, we, um, we can send that on to CPL's traffic engineer, have him take a look at it, send comments back to the planning board, and at the same time, perhaps have ready for the board's consideration, a draft neg deck or a draft pos deck. And that's what we now have to decide, what we're going to ask for.
Can I just make one point, as long as we're talking about that? That we had been authorized to have offline consultation, and I don't know if that still stands, or does the board just want to leave it the way it is? I don't.
Well, that's another question, and we can address that. We can easily do another motion, but that's sort of not, I don't want to get sidetracked off of what we're doing. So, I mean, we could pose this as a, sort of a straw vote to the planning board members. Neg deck, pos deck. We could do it, um, one by one, or we could just kind of raise hands, and then we'll do a motion. But I don't think we're getting any farther than, than we have so far unless we do something specific.
If we put it off for another month, negative deck.
What would putting it off for another month do?
Microphone, please. We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We put it off for a vote, for the negative deck. While we get it, because we need this stuff with the transportation regarding.
So.
Would that make, would that?
So my response to that is, and I, I'm not speaking for the whole board, is why not ask CPL to prepare a draft neg deck and have it ready?
That's fine.
Assuming that the traffic impact study has been completed, submitted, reviewed by CPL, and comments returned from CPL.
That would be fine with me.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
But that doesn't have to be in the whole motion, because that's a given. That's what we always do.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I think, if I may, like, the, the motion would be for the preparation of a draft neg deck for consideration at next month's meeting.
Yeah.
So you're not making the decision tonight, actually neg deck or pos deck. You're just reviewing a document, you know, at next month's meeting.
Correct. And, but we will have to, to make it practical and worthwhile. We'll need to give direction to CPL to draft it as one or the other, as opposed to just give us a determination of significance based on what you think. That's what we're, that's what we're doing. That's why we went through this whole discussion tonight.
Yeah.
So, um, let me, let me ask this. Of all the board members here tonight, which is all of us, um, who, and this is not a vote, this is a straw vote, who thinks this should be done through a pos deck?
Draft it as a neg deck, and we can review it next month. I'm just, I'm just not convinced this project is safe.
And I don't want to hold up the project.
And I'm not going to, we can draft it as a neg deck, so we have something to talk about next month.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think I agree with Anthony. Let's just draft the neg deck.
Just draft it, it's here.
And, you know, and we'll look at it if, for some reason, we think it's not correct. It's, we don't have to vote on it, and we don't have, or we can just say, no, this isn't, you know, we're moving in a different direction, that's all. I think having it here next month, in case everything goes in that direction, we can act on it instead of waiting an extra month to act on this.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. And we're also not voting on the EAF Part II tonight because there are revisions that, that we want to make sure CPL has a chance to do it, and to look at it in conjunction with a draft, possible draft neg deck. I think it would put it into context a little bit more. What do you think about that, Liz? I mean, we will, I'll ask for a motion in a minute, but you're, you're going to be
I think it's fine. You know, my feeling is since, since the difference between a secret negative declaration and a secret positive declaration is, I think, one area of impact, more or less, that we draft the neg deck, we revise the fully EAF Part II for the board's comments tonight, see what happens at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And, you know, theoretically, if the board is uncomfortable taking action on the neg deck, then that would mean we would wait till the next month to consider a pos deck. So if, so anyway, um, and I don't, Dominic, you jump in here, but if the difference between the neg deck and the pos deck is that traffic item, the possibility is that a draft neg deck is prepared, and then an alternative pos deck would be prepared. So that's just an option, but it's up to the board. If you want to just have the neg deck, and we get here and see what happens, and if you're not ready, then we wait, we wait till the next.
Do, do we know what would help mitigate our concerns, our traffic concerns, and remove all of the concerns that we have, and therefore we would all be okay with a neg deck next month? Voting on the neg deck next month? Do we know what those are? I mean, that, 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 your point was, it's, you know, there's this feeling that this is a dangerous area, and it's going to continue to get worse. And, and the area, and the concern is not mitigated by the mitigations that the, that the client has, has up to this point proposed. So do we know, can we articulate what that is?
No.
No, and I kind of asked Anthony that.
I mean, you mentioned a couple of big things, right? Like, for example, closing the, closing the, the gas station entranceway and so on. Those are, those are some very specific things that would help mitigate some concerns.
Right, yeah. But I just want to say something, like, the, the traffic is what it is, and it's going to continue because progress is coming. So, and unfortunately, because the way the area was developed a long time ago, the infrastructure is not really there. There, there's only so much space on that quarter of 9D. The DOT has control of it, like you said. It's not going to change. If this was true a while ago, we wouldn't approve the stadium, because people would have said that that was, you know, the amount of people coming in and out, and the safety and everything else. I'm just saying that, when I first moved here, I walked on 52. I could walk on that road with my kid in a carriage. I wouldn't do that now, but that's just reality. There's, there's nothing, other than me moving or something. I'm just saying that, you know, there is a turn lane there, like Felix said. People are going to have to have memory reflex of now going to have to learn a new traffic pattern that you got the development there, and people are going to turn into it, just like when Westage and Walmart came in and everything else, and the Duchess Mall, probably in the 70s. I, I'm sorry, I just, you know, sometimes I just feel like, like spinning a wheel here. Sorry.
You know, if, if I could help focus, you know, the discussion as well, it, you know, it's not enough under secret to just identify that there's a significant adverse impact, but that the mitigation that's being proposed also by the applicant is not, is practicable. So there has to be a practicable mitigation, you know, that's, that's available, that the applicant could actually achieve to address the concern. In this case, as I said previously, the mitigation measures relating to traffic and, and improvements to traffic in that intersection will be within the purview of the DOT, with input by this board, of course, but ultimately will be a decision of the DOT.
Yeah.
I'm just, I understand what you're saying, Dominic. I, I just said that, basically, knowing, driving up and down that roadway, other than eminent domaining property up ahead, um, there's no way to really change that roadway significantly, other than, like you said, proper lighting, proper turn lanes. You've tried to mitigate, like you said, people doing stuff. But I'm going to tell you, just coming home tonight, I was turning, going down my road, which is a one-way, and a guy's trying to make a left onto the one-way. I turn around, I come around, and I tell him, roll down your window. You can't go that way. It's a one-way. And he turns and goes on that way anyway. So, you know, what we're saying is that I think people are going to be pretty decent about it, as, as much as they can, but you can't really think of everything. of everything.
You're saying it much more directly and succinctly than I did, but you're saying the same things.
All right. I am going to ask for a motion to authorize CPL to prepare revised draft EAF Parts Two and Three based on tonight's reunion discussion, and to prepare a draft negative declaration of environmental significance on this application for the board's review and consideration at the April 11 meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
Felix moves it. Is there a second?
I second.
Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that's all seven votes in favor of pursuing the possibility of a negative declaration. I won't even bring up what I was going to suggest after that, because I don't think, after tonight's discussion, that we want to go any farther than having a draft NAG deck for the board, because that may take a while to go through as well. Yes, sir?
Two points of clarification.
Oh, yes.
Are we still authorized? Can we have a motion, at least for Corey to be able to speak with CPL with respect to traffic?
So why don't we do that? I think we probably could go on the ongoing basis that we already have passed the motion on, but I think to be absolutely sure and clear, we'll do another motion to that effect. So would somebody like to move? What are you moving, Brad?
Motion to let the two consultants talk to each other.
So the two traffic?
The traffic study.
Can I sit in on it, though, too?
I think we want to have, we could just say, authorizing the applicant's representatives to discuss, to have conversations with CPL's representatives. That can include traffic engineering and planning issues. Any involvement in that motion, which we'll get to in a second, any involvement of attorneys, should one attorney decide to participate on one side, then the attorney on the other side must be part of that conversation.
Fair enough.
So Fred made a motion. Is there a second? All right. Felix seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that carries.
And the one other item, we need several variances in connection with this. And I know, you know, I've just been on board in our firm for the last two months or so, so I don't know what previous discussions have occurred. I was wondering if it would be appropriate to get a referral to the ZBA at this point?
Yeah, we don't do referrals, and also I think it probably would be prudent to wait till, to see, wait, sorry, yeah, to wait to see what happens with the NAG deck at the April meeting before we pursue any, anything with the ZBA.
But maybe, I mean, it might be helpful to have a list. Can you guys generate some kind of a list for what you'd be pursuing, at least then?
Yeah, that's true, because I.
It's not a moving target?
Yeah, I think it was in our last submission, but I'll make sure.
Okay.
I think in the, in the last submission, it may, there might have been some unclarity as to, in terms of what might be variances and what might be waivers that the planning board could do. So we will clarify that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. I think that's it for the night on that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah. No, that was a very good discussion. Although somewhat lengthy, I think this turned out to be a good meeting to do it at. It's turned out. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. So, okay, that's the last item on the agenda. I was just going to mention, most of you already know that the Homeland Towers balloon test was postponed this past weekend, been rescheduled for Saturday, March 16th, with an alternate date of March 17th, Sunday, depending on weather conditions. Also, I think most of you should have heard that the town board at their February 21st meeting authorized Doug Fishman to serve as our, as the planning board's RF radio frequency consultant. Looks like a possible timeframe would be that Homeland Towers would submit their visual analysis based on the balloon test for the board's May meeting. Unless it, unless the balloon test gets postponed again, but, and Saturday looks actually like a pretty good day weather-wise, except for the possibility of wind. So, and that then Doug Fishman would tentatively plan to attend the May 9th meeting if all that happens. Yeah, so, all right. So also, I was just going to mention, if you were wondering, the reason we haven't seen the Walmart MFC expansion back on the agenda is because they withdrew their proposal to put the MFC expansion in. Yeah, just wanted, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it. Second time, two strikes in your eye.
But it's good to say.
If the balloon, if the balloon test gets moved to Sunday, can we ask for a green balloon?
Hopefully, it won't be Saturday then. All right. I think we're ready for, well, the next meeting is Thursday, April 11th, as we know, and the deadline for submissions is Wednesday, March 27th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Is there a third? Is there a fourth? We're out of here.
You could put any name you want to say.
Yeah, I heard.